Good evening, I'd like to call the General Committee meeting.
Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather together tonight. We are so grateful for the hard-working teachers, administrators, and support staff that you have placed in our district. We are fortunate to have such dedicated individuals working with us to serve our students and our community. Please be with us as we move forward toward making decisions for the coming school year. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Wall, would you lead us in the flag to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Roll call, please, Ms. Lametta.
Mrs. Azavado is not with us tonight. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. England?
Yeah.
Mrs. Daisart?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
And Mr. Warner's not here tonight. And Mrs. White?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Uh, Ms. Lametta, thank you for being with us tonight. We appreciate it. Uh, we understand Ms. Votche is still at the Bessie Meeting in Baton Rouge, so, uh, they're continuing to make very important decisions for the entire state. So, thank you, Ms. Lametta, for being with us tonight.
Thank you, my honor.
Thank you. And before, um, before we go on to our regular, uh, agenda items at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence. We've had several, um, losses of our educational communities' families. Uh, Ms. Deborah Seibert's son, RJ Seibert, has passed. Um, Mr. Barry Lemoine's mother, Ms. Sylvia Lemoine, has passed. And Ms. Joni Bloom's mother, Vergee, has passed. So, we want to take a moment of silence for the Seibert, Lemoine, and Bloom family, please. My deepest sympathies and condolences go out to the Seibert, Lemoine, and Bloom families. Thank you. And before we go on to the regular agenda item, I'd also like to recognize, we have so many educators with us tonight. And, uh, we appreciate all of you for being with us tonight. So, if you're an educator or a former educator, would you please stand and be acknowledged? And, you know, through this whole, um, COVID-19 pandemic, our educators have been strong and continue to educate our students and have, you know, we've all had to adjust in every way, but for educators, it's been very particularly difficult. So, we thank you all and for your form of service also. Okay. First item on the agenda is Louisiana State Reading Association Awards. And obtaining the media award is Ms. Alex Schneider. Alex, would you come up, please? I'd like to say a little piece, if that's okay? Yes. About Alex? Okay, well, actually, I'm gonna let Kayla do that piece, because I think...
All right, thank you. All right. Alex is a Coordinator of Communications and supports literacy by keeping the district website and Facebook page updated with the latest news and curriculum links. She broadcasts the super news and often highlights teachers, awesome events, and other things going on in our district. She supports our local council and is often seen taking pictures at events. She works with our tech, I'm sorry, our Teach St. Bernard candidates and actively recruits top talent to the profession by going out to job fairs and utilizing our media outreach to promote the profession in our district. Alex is a gem and we are proud to have her on our team.
Thanks, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you, the Reading Council. Do I, what do I have to do? Just shoot Alex?
I'm not getting on.
How do you know if you're smiling?
That's okay.
All right, ready, set, go. Very good.
Take a picture with Alex.
Alex, would you come up? I think the board members would like to take a picture with you.
Oh, great. Sure. Yeah, around the inside.
And we really appreciate y'all giving us a really good ear.
We usually do this at the Paragon, because it's a state award, but in light of everything...
She went beyond the district. Well, remember it always. While we're at it, should we put Brenda up there with her?
We, yes, Brenda. Let's put Brenda up there and then we can...
Stack her together, so we only have to take one picture.
Yes, let's put Brenda in and then we'll save our piece about Brenda.
Yeah, just stand next to her.
Thank you, so kind.
Yeah, Brenda, for sure, we cut. Why don't y'all turn, everybody on this side of Alex, turn this way, and everybody on this side of...
Now, Brenda, I have to really give you a...
Before you present, just everybody.
Yeah, sure.
Mary would like to say something.
And just before you present the next award, I just wanted to take a minute, since Ms. Votche is not here and is still at the Bessie Meeting. I know she would want to say what a tremendous asset that Nick Snyder has been here in our district, not only through our website communication, Facebook, reaching out to the community. Um, everything she has done, I've heard her say, Alex is her right hand when it comes to communication, and there's no way she could get the messages out that she does and keep everyone informed as she does without, with what you do every day, and we do way more than any of us know you do. So, I just know she would want to say that, so I want to say that on her behalf. So, thank you.
Yeah, I did want to also, on behalf... Excuse me, wait, one more. We have some other comments? I'm sorry. Ms. Lemoine would like to say something also. Ms. Lemoine?
Thank you, Ms. Daisart. I just wanted to echo Ms. Lametta's sentiments and say, especially during this international pandemic, communication with our families, our teachers, our students has been so important. And Alex, you've done a tremendous job, all while being a wife, a mother, having two small children at home, and still being here around the clock. I don't know how you do it, but you make it look so easy. You are always so cool, calm, collected, but we really appreciate all that you've done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine, and ditto to, from all the other board members also. Alex, you've been wonderful, and we appreciate all of your wonderful efforts to communicate to all involved in the school system. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, all right, Tessie. Ms. Tessie White, I'm so sorry.
I'm not moving until you tell me. No.
I got this game, okay.
So, I just, just wanted to take the opportunity to explain what the awards are about, because these awards are not from the St. Bernard Reading Council. These are from the Louisiana Reading Council. This is a state award. It's a huge honor. These two individuals that we're giving awards to did win for our district, but we submitted the names, we submit the names of district winners to the state. And, you know, when we write up, we say why we think that our people should get it, but they were selected amongst a committee of educators from the Louisiana Reading Association to receive these awards. So, they were competing against others from around the state, and so we feel very honored, you know, that we have two winners of the state, of state awards this year. And we know, you know, what quality educators we have in St. Bernard Parish, but we were very proud that two of our own were selected, and, uh, we know that they deserve these awards. So, without further ado, I'd like to, um, present Brenda's award to her. And this was, um, our, you know, information that we, we submitted to the state on behalf of Brenda. Brenda's a very deserving of the Educator of the Year Award, as she works tirelessly to ensure that students and teachers of St. Bernard Parish are literate across the curriculum. She incorporates literacy into math curriculum district-wide. She manages a Power School page with a plethora of resources for teachers to utilize. Brenda trains teachers in best practices of our Tier One curriculum. During the pandemic, Brenda has trained teachers on how to utilize Zoom to teach high-quality virtual lessons. She even has puppets, by the way. Uh, she goes above and beyond the call of duty when supporting teachers in and out of the classroom. She's been known to tutor students in need and model lessons for teachers. She is exemplary in all ways and next to none when it comes to math literacy. I'm honored to nominate her as Educator of the Year. And I truly do know she deserves this award.
Brenda?
Louisiana Educator of...
I just want to say thank you for everything that you do for us as educators, and thank you to my supervisors and Tessie and everybody else who's a part of our school district. I think about Dr. Kraft, you know, and I think about the Educator of the Year Award, because Dr. Kraft was a teacher when I was in school. And I look at Mr. Egan, and I think about you when you drove your car when I was on the, the homecoming car to Chumet High years ago, you know? And I think about our close-knit community and all the people that we serve. And it's just, it's an honor to be a part of a community like this one, you know? And I just want to say thank you to you for supporting us, because we can't do what we do without you. And it's all about the children, you know? So, thank you.
Ms. Bernie Hambryce, would you please come up?
You know, I can't keep quiet, but I can't talk without either. Um, with, under the leadership of Tessie this past year, St. Bernard Council got the Louisiana Honor Council. And, uh, not only from the state of Louisiana, she also got from the International Literacy Honor Council. So, she's done a lot of work and submitted a lot of stuff. If you never see her book, you would know what all she has done. And I would have brought it tonight, but I couldn't carry it. It's that big. So, I'd like to present this to Tessie.
I accept this on behalf of the entire association, because this represents the work we have done for the St. Bernard Reading Association. And we will continue to do that under Kayla's leadership as well, so, thank you.
Congratulations to the St. Bernard Parish Reading Association on, um, to get the state award is just a wonderful honor, and we know it takes a lot of hard work. Tessie, thank you very much. And Bernie, you've been an educator, you've been an educator for many years and still involved. Now, you retired, but you, like you said, you have another job. I know you're very involved in Louisiana Reading Association, and we appreciate you still being a part of that and coming back to St. Bernard Parish. And it's just, we, I think we're all so proud of all of our local award winners and, um, really showing the public...
Well, I'm so proud of our school board, because we are a property, the only group in Louisiana that has all the school board members as, uh, the association.
Very good, because you're such a good recruiter, Bernie. We're all members of the Louisiana Reading Association, so, that's right. Well, thank you, Bernie. We appreciate it. And Tessie, thank you for all your hard work. And, um, Brenda, congratulations on your state award. We're very, very proud of you and very happy that you received the Educator of the Year Award. And I just want to say, I know from firsthand also, my, um, some of my children had the fortunate, um, experience of having Brenda as a teacher, and she's absolutely wonderful. So, thank you so much for continuing your hard work also.
Did you have a picture with Brenda too, like we did with Alex?
Excuse me? Yeah, Brenda was in it. Tessie, were you, I don't think you were in it. Let's do a picture with Tessie and Bernie and, um, anybody else from the Reading Association here? Yeah, oh, of course, Natalie, yes. Okay, let's do one more picture for, um, for St. Bernard Parish getting the Reading Association Award and our other two winners, uh, state winners, please. Thanks again to the Louisiana Reading Association for achieving state status in a Louisiana Reading Association and having St. Bernard recognized as the number one. And I'd be remiss if I wouldn't acknowledge Ms. Roslin White, because Tessie White, that, that's Roslin's daughter. So, congratulations, Roslin, on raising a wonderful educator too. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is an education item. Mrs. White?
Thank you. Uh, number five, we have a long-range strategic plan and action plan presented by Ms. Mary Lametta.
Thank you. As we do each year, we go through our strategic plan, and as you notice, on this strategic plan, it's a five-year plan. So, if you notice on the top, it's 2016 through 2021, so we'll be revising it going into next school year. Um, however, we do have our four goals on the first page for you, and just briefly, I'll explain the goals quickly. Uh, we basically have goals and objectives that all relate to teaching, learning, and assessment that assure student achievement. Effective and certified employees, our goal is to have effective and certified employees through ongoing recruitment and professional development. And then, we also have a goal to have responsible finances and support services, which enhance teaching, learning, the learning environments, and which are safe and secure. And finally, we have positive impressions of our school system and positive imaging goals. So, what I did on the handouts for you is I highlighted the places where we will have a focus for this school year. And as you go through the pages, you'll see highlights under each goal. So, under the first goal, uh, and I did a presentation actually on the first goal, is that we're gonna have the teachers utilize the learning management system to deliver the online instruction to the students, and the beauty of that is, whether they're in school or at home, with the Chromebooks in the classroom, and if they move to home learning, they'll be with the same curriculum throughout. So, we had, I did a presentation on that, I believe, the last month. And we also will focus on teachers proactively planning for students based on student need, looking at where the students are, and looking ahead to the best way to adjust lessons and annotate lessons to prepare for students to be successful. And we will also focus on ways to help the students keep their grades up, if there were any learning gaps or any reason students are struggling to really double back, and make sure students have learned what they need to learn and help them recover whatever they might need to recover along the way. So, we'll have a strong focus on that this year. And then, as we move in throughout the year, we'll make sure that our teachers, we'll look for any teachers, new teachers, or Teach St. Bernard teachers who might be in need of any sort of support. We'll make sure from the first 60 days, we get them the support they need. And then, we'll continue with that alt certification program. Teach St. Bernard's been wonderful for us. We've gotten a phenomenal group of teachers every year. Many of them have stayed with us and proven to be some really strong educators. So, that's been a wonderful program for us. And then, rounding out the last couple of pages, we basically will have a strong focus on taking any additional funding we have to help us, uh, meet the CDC guidelines as far as the minimum number of students in a classroom, or maximum, I should say, the cleaning, the disinfecting, and all the things that we're gonna focus on this year, along with the technology and the internet access for students. We want to have a strong focus on using those funds to do what the students need for the school year. So, um, in a nutshell, those are our focus areas. And the last piece, on the very last page, you see, we will be implementing a new piece of software called School Status to help our teachers be in strong communication with the parents. I know many of our teachers had to use their own cell phones when we had the school closure to reach parents, because they normally call parents from home. So, with this software, the teachers will be able to reach parents on their own line that we provide. It's, um, it's an internet-based line, and the parents can mark that phone number. They can know that's the teacher calling. The teachers can text, and it translates in over 25 languages. So, the teachers can type a text in English, and if it's going to a Spanish-speaking parent, it'll translate to Spanish when the parent receives it, and the parent answers back in Spanish. The teachers can translate it into English to read it and then continue that way. So, it'll be, it translates, I think, over 30 languages. So, that's one of the biggest pieces that we're excited for, um, there as well. So, it's gonna be just a good chance to improve parent communication and, and help us keep the parents informed and reach out to the parents. So, those are gonna be the big-picture areas we're gonna focus on within these four goals this school year.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna send it to the board for our motion. Oh, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Long has a question.
So, Ms. Lametta, we are in year four of this five-year plan, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, that means next year, we'll do another five-year plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And I'm sure you, you can expect changes next year?
Yes, I think that's the one thing we always expect is change.
Right, right.
I think, yes, we do. We expect change and growth, and that's what makes it exciting, so, yes, for sure. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, I just wanted to, the last thing that you made, from what I thought, um, get together with the parents that they did, you know, that, that they think that that we can communicate, because today, we've got so many different nationalities that's coming into our system, you know? And that's what I heard last year, you know, that we have, like, seven different types of, 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 um, nationalities to try to communicate. Now, we reject that option, so we can communicate with them. I think it's competitive. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we send this to the full board for recognition.
Okay, and, any one second? Ms. Lemoine?
And I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're gonna vote.
Any discussion? Has there been a discussion from anyone?
We'll vote on it?
Yeah, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes nine zero.
Next item is an executive item, Mr. England.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Daisart. Um, this is information purposes only, so we do have one thing on the personnel changes that has to be approved by the board, that we sent to the full board for recognition, this is with a leave without pay. But Julie Wang is a graduate of Mississippi State, and so, we're leaving without pay.
Sorry, Ms. Lemoine. Yes, Ms. Daisart?
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we grant the leave without pay to our employee who's requested it.
Second. Second, Mr. Long. Any, anything for discussion on this, ma'am? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes nine zero.
Oh, Mr. England, I'm sorry. One other thing, um, we have a retiree, Clarence Barrow, from Chumet High School, and we want to just thank Mr. Barrow, excuse me, for all of his hard work and, um, and service that he's given to the St. Bernard Parish school system. And we want to wish you a very happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Daisart, and, uh, I'd also like to say have a good retirement, because it's good to be retired sometimes. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, um, the 2020, 2021 transportation routes. Um, this is Ms. Julie Ginnord, which you have, look, we've got the head lady here today.
I'll take the raisin salad. All right, so you guys should have your purple folder. Um, what I did was, uh, I'm hopeful that, you know, we will be running this eventually. This is a regular, uh, what our routes regularly look like. And so, the two sheets I gave you were just samples. I have this done for every school. Um, because what happened is, so, if we stay at Phase Two, that's gonna be 50% of max capacity, which means 33 students on a bus, okay? Um, and no more than 33. Now, some of our buses have riders. That's, usually, they don't have a lot of kids on a bus anyway, but we have made plans, all that, in case they could help us as well. So, um, it's, I, it's impossible to get everybody there in the first wave of buses, because that's what we do on a regular day. Um, elementary kids can have, can have 66 kids on a bus, you know? And, um, so, what we tried to do is best we could, and I give an example of Miro and Tris. And none of this is set in stone, because we have to see where the kids are going to be. But, um, if you look just down, it'll, again, I'm sorry, I'm going ahead of myself. The first thing that y'all have, all in a purple folder altogether, that's the routes that we traditionally do, that we give y'all with all the different stops and so forth. The two extra sheets that are in there, one has Tris and one has Miro. And I tried to highlight it so you could see, um, the stuff, but I also picked my two toughest schools, um, to cover for. So, and I couldn't have done this without my dispatchers' help, Don Lala and my secretary, Linda Roba. So, what we tried to do was get as many kids as we could on a first run, and we just took whatever somebody couldn't do. And so, sometimes it was, they don't do these two streets, but they gotta come back and get those two streets. Or I'll have one bus comes back to get the leftover from that route, the leftover from that route, and the leftover from that route, okay? And, um, you know, Ms. Votche's like, I just, what do we need to do so that all kids get there on time? Well, it, it's, I don't know if it's doable to be exactly on time, obviously, but I don't... Well, it's, I don't know if it's doable to be exactly on time, obviously, but I don't think it's going to be a problem to where they're going to be losing any academic time or stuff like that. And then, of course, we'll work with the schools as much as we can with that. In the statement from this, on the school website, Ms. Boche put about being a special challenge for transportation and asked that if a parent or guardian or someone else is able to give their children transportation to, from, or both at school, that that would be really helpful, and obviously, it would be helpful. But my plan is for just the normal kids who, oh, that's a terrible thing to say, but just the kids who are normally riding with their parent, I'm just going to consider those, and we just try to make it work for all of the students. We call them Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. It's when your first school start, Shamet High, Raleigh, and Smith Elementary, okay? That's a, that's a good one to belong to because we got room on Smith's buses. And the reason why we have room on Smith's buses and not other elementaries is simply because they're the only elementary school that starts at 7:30. So, I mean, I could take two away and give them to Shamet High, but we got Shamet High where they need to be, and we got CF Raleigh where they need to be. So that's why, you know, that works out in our favor that we don't have to worry about Smith is going to be able to get their kids and on time, no problem. So Tier One, taken care of. Tier Two is the middle schools in Araby. I took one bus from Araby and was able to put everybody else on Araby's bus, 33 to a bus, and have nobody come back for Araby. And I took that bus, and I'm going to make them go to AJ instead. Now, AJ, all the middle schools, except for St. Bernard High, all going to, St. Bernard Middle, excuse me, Freudian slip or whatever you call it, but anyway, so I was able to use, give them some help to make it at least a little bit better. And I just, if you can say it makes sense, we tried to get the streets together as close as possible so that when somebody has to go back to get kids after they drop off one run, they don't go all the way to the front of the, to one of the district lines. We have them closer. So they do their route first, and then they go pick up the closer ones. It's going to be a work in progress. I'm convinced we can, we can do it without a problem. We just got to, you know, first, let's get those first couple of days over. I was a tolerance to get those first couple of days over with. And, you know, my bus driver is always willing to do some things differently to help us out, so I don't have any problem with that. We have the buses. It would be great if I had 10 bus drivers up at high waiting around. That's just, that's not the case. We are, we are training them, and we have some coming in, but we're always looking for bus drivers. So.
I've got a quick question. Julie, I know you mentioned that some kids might end up being a little late, and I know a lot of them look forward to the breakfast at school.
Go get breakfast.
Have we, have you considered maybe recommending like an earlier start time for pickup?
Well, we have looked at that. And first of all, you know, as I talked to everybody, every child will get a breakfast. There, what's called grab-and-go breakfasts, which honestly, I don't know if I should say this, but I'm gonna, kids love the grab-and-go breakfasts. They really do. And my kids would rather that than me cook eggs and bacon. I don't know what's wrong with them, but that's just the way they are, you know? Anyway, so that's going to be a really good thing. And elementary is going to do it a little bit differently in how they hand it out and stuff, but that will all definitely be taken care of so that no one will miss breakfast.
Okay, and what you're talking about, some bus drivers going back over the same streets. I mean, that's going to take time. That's why I'm thinking that maybe if we start a little bit earlier, five or 10 minutes, it might help.
Right. What we were talking about was maybe not for all schools, but just for certain schools because I hate to push back time when like, Araby's not going to have a problem, you know? St. Bernard High, St. Bernard Middle, excuse me, is not going to have that big of a problem. Trist, I'm helping out, but I mean, they still got three buses coming back. I mean, it's a solid as to it. And AJ's got a couple of buses coming back, but I still, you know, those are all right. So then what happens is the elementary is the one that we're looking at. And I know they have talked about it. It would just be for certain schools, though, and we just haven't made a, I wouldn't make that final decision anyway, but Ms. Boche is definitely looking at that and considering that. But I got to get every one of those in order, and I can actually tell her how long it'll take. Boring accidents and things like that, but that happens anyway, and so, you know, we always prepare for that regardless.
Yeah, I know. We, you may, you may need maybe a different start time for almost every school in certain situations. I mean, you got a special time for Smith, you said, right?
Well, yeah, because they, it's not a special time for Smith. They just always have done that to, to make best use of our buses. So Shamet High needs so many of them, but they don't need all of them. We have 50 buses, they don't need all of them. So after doing that, then it was, well, small schools, so they had CF Raleigh that's small, they have Smith that's small, and that's why they went originally to that time anyway. I don't, I don't know if starting them earlier is, is the best, and it's something that we continue to discuss, or if it's, you know, moving a few of the others. Because I truly don't think Tier One and Tier Two, the middle schools and high school, I don't think we're going to have to mess with those times unless we will to not really start earlier, but let them drop off the kids early, if that makes any sense.
And Ms. Ginnard, don't y'all get them to school in lead time anyway?
Yes.
Students don't arrive right at the bell, so the bus drivers do have some time, and I think you said you made routes that were close?
Yes.
So they, so they may, it looks like they may make it.
That's what my hope is.
Right.
That's what I hope is.
In time, so.
And like I said, I feel good about the Tier One and Tier Two, I do.
I'm sure y'all are going to work it out.
Yes.
I mean, every year, it seems like you guys do a great job, and we have very few complaints, if any, and.
Music to my ears.
Yeah, so let's, let's just keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. England. Yeah, Ms. Ginnard, I just want to say, great job. I know this has been, the bus routes has probably been one of the biggest logistical nightmares for the, you know, going back to school. You've done a great job, though, of planning, and of course, we know that this is going to be a fluid situation, but great job, and to your, to your staff also. We appreciate their extra hard work. And just for the public's notice, all of our times, school times, will remain the same as they have been, correct, Ms. Ginnard?
I don't think we have said for sure that's going to happen, but.
But as of right now.
As of right now, yes, ma'am.
And based on these bus routes, and as of today.
Yes, ma'am.
And again, it's, you know, that could change. But, you know, with changing times, we also have to consider the amount of time that the teachers will have on duty also.
Oh, absolutely.
If you start too early and the, and the children get there too early before school starts, we have, you know, they have to be accepted by the teachers.
Right.
And be there to supervise. So, you know, there's so many other factors involved.
Yes, ma'am.
But anyway, thank you for your hard work and trying to figure this out. And again, hopefully, our community will be very patient if we do need to change some things in our bus routes and those kind of things.
And that's definitely something that's going to be key for that first week. And then I feel like after that, we're going to just do what we can always do, you know? You just got to do what makes it work, and if there's something adjustment needed, you know, sometimes they'll say, well, you should switch it. Don't make the same bus driver go back every time. That sounds great and fair. However, if that bus driver is the one that gets there first, it's much better for the kids if she's the one that always, oh, he, I'm sorry, we do have some very fine male bus drivers. You know, so if they're getting there and dropping their kids off, then you really do want them to go be the one. And then in the afternoon, maybe we'll switch off on them because that'll give them a break. I mean, as much as kids do want to go home on time, I'd much prefer them to get to school on time and then maybe have to wait a little bit in the afternoon.
Okay, well, thank you again.
No problem.
Thank you.
Hi. So I know that typically, we fill out the transportation cards on back-to-school night, so you guys generally don't have an idea of who's riding the bus or not riding the bus until right before school starts. Is it possible to do some kind of like online survey to get an idea from parents that, you know, I know my kids rode the bus last year, but this year, I'll make the effort to bring them to help unburden the system so we could have a better idea ahead of time how many kids, how much of an issue this is going to be and whether or not moving school times and all those other things is absolutely necessary.
Well, let me answer the first part because that happens no matter if we had COVID-19 or not. So for the most part, people who, kids who rode the bus last year are still going to ride the bus, okay? What we look at is that fifth grade group going from fifth grade to sixth grade because let's say it's a Lacoste kid that is in a walking area for Lacoste, right next door, whatever, Corrine, somewhere close. Well, then, we automatically make them as a sixth grader a bus rider until we find out different because I'd rather overestimate than underestimate.
Right.
So, so that's really the only things that if a change in school is going to determine whether they're close enough to walk, you always have parents who get different jobs. They start earlier, then they start later. They can bring them to school, but they can't pick them up, things like that. And that's when I say the first couple of days really help us out because it's, I don't want to use the word impossible, but it's almost impossible to figure out. I have people that call me, you know, on the phone, I am so sorry, I totally forgot. My son cannot ride the bus today. I'm like, okay, you know, and so I had to call the school and say she can't, you know, get her child today, but we can pick them up, put them on this bus to make sure he gets home and stuff. So it's pre-K four, you know, that was, that registration slowed the process anyway because of COVID-19. Those are always new kids, too, but we start pre-K a week afterwards, so we have time to get those numbers and everything. You know, we talked about what we put on the website. I would have no problem with them emailing me or calling me, whatever, just to let me know, especially if it's different than what it was. So if you're always like, you're going to try to help us out, and thank you, I appreciate that. So there's other people that could do that as well. So I think there does need to be a way for them to let us know.
Right.
And I have had several phone calls, but I think it needs to be a little bit more direct.
Right, I agree.
It just may help gather some information ahead of time.
I know I've called several families that live down the road because it's much, much less kids on the bus, but that can't take away the time that you have to go all the way down and come all the way back. So I was able to get that for the middle school. Nobody has to go past the lock, the locks. And high school, I'm working on, but elementary, I'm going to have to have somebody go down there for, you know, two kids, but that's just the way it is.
Yeah, you can't solve all the problems.
Anything else, Ms. Jackson?
Nope, that's it.
Anyone else? Well, Ms. Ginnard, how are our buses? You know, how's the fleet? You know?
I mean.
Are you satisfied?
Oh, yeah, our fleet looks great. You know, we're very lucky to have so many new buses. So between the 16s, the 17s, and the 18s, that gave us 20 new buses. We got a fleet of 50 that we use every day. Our spares look, look like they're in really good shape. So, I mean, our mechanics, I'm not saying we couldn't use another one because we can always use another everybody, you know? Another teacher, another bus driver, another mechanic, but they do a heck of a job, and especially during the summertime, they really work on everything to make sure it works out. I don't, I don't know that we could be in any better shape, to be honest with you, because we address every concern. I mean, they don't, they don't take any shortcuts, you know? They want to make sure they fix that, and I have to give my, you know, my predecessor a lot of credit for that because Kathy Gonzalez is the reason why they look like they do, and I'm just kind of keeping that going.
Right. Well, the main thing is that whatever the board can do for you to make your job easier, we're here to help you.
You could drive a bus, Mr. England. I mean, I don't see you as a trainee.
I'm hip to license.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No, no. So, we need a motion to send this to a full board. We have a motion by Ms. Lamoyne, second by Mr. Long. Anything for further discussion on this issue? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Ma'am? Give us your data.
I could stick a few extra in my minivan.
Thank you, Mr. England. Okay. Next, next item on the agenda is an insurance item, Mr. Egan.
Let's hope I can get my mic working. Okay, it's time to renew our athletic insurance, even though we're unsure about how this is going to look this year. But we, in your packets, we have our proposal, or our recommendation for renewal of athletic insurance. We have a renewal proposal from our current insurer, who is Risk Services of Louisiana, and they will renew our policy for the same price that we paid in the, in the previous Now, the cost is going to be mitigated by a rebate that we're going to receive for our 2019-2020 policy. They gave us a rebate related to the COVID-19 pandemic because athletics were suspended mid-year. So we are going to get a $7,020 rebate, which is going to reduce the total cost to $42,378, but the official price is going to be $49,397.62. We had one other company that expressed an interest in quoting for athletic insurance, but one of the things we request of our vendors that offer this insurance is that they also offer voluntary policies to all students in the school district in excess of the athletes, and that company did not offer that, plus their premium was much higher than this premium that's being quoted for this company. So this is our recommendation and recommend that we renew it for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you. Mr. Long?
Mr. Fernandez, I know that Louisiana High School Athletic Association has said probably won't have contact sports until later on in the year.
Well, as, as I appreciate it, they won't have contact sports such as football, but there are other sports that are still going to be played, such as volleyball and other things like that. So we will have some sports. It's just the heavy contact sports that they are.
So my question is, if, if some of our sports are canceled for some reason, then will they adjust this premium?
Yes, I would imagine we would get another rebate based on actual participation.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Isart?
Mr. Fernandez, this premium that's being quoted, does it include the, the physicals at the beginning of the exam?
It does not include the physicals. We do the physicals separately through the clinic at Shamet High School.
Okay, but at no cost to the student, though, right?
Well, it's part of the fee that they pay. It's, part of it goes for insurance and part is for the physicals. So the $35 that the students will pay to participate in the athletics, part of $25 goes towards insurance, $10 goes towards the physical.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions?
You got it, Mr. Egan.
Just one more. And we're still, thank you, Mr. Egan. And Mr. Fernandez, it's still mandated that they take the insurance, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That policy has not changed?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Long?
Ms. Fernandez, is there a hardship in case, in case a student can't afford it or parents are not working? I mean.
If the circumstances dictate, the school can discuss that with the parents and work something out for them.
Okay, okay. Because I know with this COVID-19, a lot of people are out of work and.
Right. The school, the school will usually work on a plan with the parents.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do we have anyone else? All right, do we have a motion? Motion from Mrs. Jackson, second by Mrs. Isart. Any further input? Please vote, oh, no, we can't vote the machines. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Do we have anyone opposed? All right, vote for it.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Next item on the agenda are superintendent's recommendations, and the biggest item is the update on school reopening plans.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And as you know, Ms. Voeche is not here because she does serve on Bessie, and they actually were still meeting when the meeting began. And her intention was to be able to give you some updates based on the results of the guidelines Bessie put out this week. Because Bessie was charged with putting some guidelines for schools to open. We don't have those results at this moment because they were still meeting when we started. But what I can tell you is, we have been meeting with our principals this week, and over the last couple of weeks, with the State Department's guidelines for the strong start, which the guidelines mention numerous things for the schools to use as they begin their opening plan, you know, regarding the face coverings, the cleaning, the symptoms monitoring, the maximum group size. And the principals actually are meeting this week, and we're beginning to formulate some plans to make sure that they can meet these guidelines. And when Ms. Voeche returns and we have the information from Bessie, they're going to then further, you know, I guess, further refine those plans to make sure we're meeting those guidelines. But she did want me to mention that some parents have been interested in our virtual option, which that may also affect some of Ms. Ginnart's bus numbers as well. So we did put on our website that, as you know, elementary students, we're planning to have them back every day, middle school students every day, and the high school with a hybrid, some home learning and some in school. But we do have an all-virtual option that we are offering, and we did put a link on our website for parents to apply if they wanted more information. So we will be having a Zoom at 3 o'clock on Monday, an informational Zoom for parents to give them more information on some of the guidelines and what the students will have to do, and explain some of the software that they will be using, and give parents enough information that they can talk with their families, talk with their students, and make a decision to see if that is something they want to do. And then we'll give a defined number of days, a range of days that parents can come online and physically register. So what they've done so far is just express interest and say they want more information. But we'll do that informational Zoom at 3 o'clock on Monday and give them the information they need to make a determination. And then we'll give them a set of time that they can actually come online and register for that.
I have a question. What's the number of parents that have expressed interest?
I do not know that. I don't have that information. Yes.
Are there any other questions, Mr. England?
Yes, yes. Okay, is, I mean, Ms. Voeche is not here, but it's something that we can address with her to see, set back one, two weeks or whatever? Well, I know, whatever Ms. Voeche and what y'all all know about her is she's data-driven, and she has the best interest of the students and the community at heart. So I know she'll take all information at her disposal and work with y'all, as she always has done, to make the best decision moving forward for the district. So I do believe she'll consider any relevant information she has and get with you all, you know, and move, make a decision to move forward.
Because safety comes first.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sure, yes, sir. And I know she will, expects to get some more information out towards the end of the week for the faculty and the community and to y'all as well. She was trying to get the information from Bessie and try to firm it up, because like you said, so many districts are giving information, and almost everyone has a disclaimer that says this is the information as of today, but as things change, this information may change. So there's always that caveat, for sure. But I know she plans on getting more information at the end of the week once she had the Bessie guidelines, you know, to consider.
Sure. Because I know it's changing daily.
Daily, yes.
You turn the news on at 5 o'clock, and you go home at 10 o'clock. It's changed. So, okay, so as long as she can keep us informed, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. England. Ms. Lamatta, as far as the Zoom on Monday at 3 o'clock, parents can find out how to get on that Zoom by going to our website?
Yes, we're going to have information on that on the website as well. And we'll put the, we're going to record the Zoom as well because some parents may be working at 3 and won't be able to get on the Zoom. So we will definitely have that recorded and put the recorded Zoom on there as well.
Great, thank you.
And we'll have a PowerPoint on that Zoom as well, which will give them some information.
Thank you, Ms. Lamatta. Are there any other questions, Mr. Long?
Ms. Lamatta, you mentioned guidelines by Bessie, and I guess what we have to understand, it's just guidelines, correct? I mean, each individual district can, can have a different plan on reopening, correct?
Yes, each district has to make the decision best for their community and what's happening in their community. I do believe they're going to put some things in place that we have to make sure we do to have a safe opening. But as, you know, as Mr. England mentioned, I listened to some of the Bessie meeting before I came to the meeting, and many people were imploring Bessie to delay the start of school. And it did come up in the meeting that that's not within their purview, that it's the local school districts that have to make that decision based on what's happening in their community.